Fall special school board recognitions night. My name is Rick Herron, Chief Communications Officer for Argyle ISD. And thank you to everyone for attending tonight. And we are very excited to honor so many talented Eagle students, teachers, coaches, and staff. And I would like to now introduce School Board President Sam Slaton to officially open tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. I usually don't get clapped for for our school board meetings, so that's awesome. All right, so this is a special meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. We do have to officially open it, so here we go. All right, good evening. The time is 6:02 PM. This is a special meeting of the Argyle ISD Board of Trustees. It is Wednesday, December 11th. At this time, we will determine if a quorum is present. There we go.
Josh Westrom, present.
You want McDade present?
Josh Slaton, present.
Kirk Hawkes, present.
Hi, Sam Slaton, present. We do have a quorum established. At this time, we're going to do our pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand. We got a flag somewhere. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right, at this time, we'll, please bow your heads, we'll have a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, just thank you for the opportunity for us to come together tonight to celebrate these students' achievements in academics, in fine arts, and athletics. Lord, we are blessed to have the opportunity to be able to witness these students and all the hard work and effort that they put in. Lord, I pray that as we end the semester, that our students have the endurance to persevere and finish strong, and that our faculty do as well. Lord, I pray that beyond our hearts, as we celebrate this season, that your Son, Jesus Christ, we celebrate his birth and the sacrifice he made on our behalf. Lord, we thank you again for the opportunity to serve this community, this district, these students, and it's in your sense, Father, we pray. Amen. All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Herron.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Slaton. As a reminder for everyone, we are live streaming the event, so thank you to our technology department, Mr. Royer and Mr. Enser upstairs for their assistance tonight. The live stream is available on the Argyle ISD YouTube channel and will be archived following tonight's event. Also, for a copy of tonight's agenda and the groups we are recognizing tonight, take a moment, if you haven't already, to scan the QR code that's on the screen, and it will be available on each slide also on the presentation. Okay, for everyone participating, here's how tonight works. A representative from each group, school, or team will say a few brief comments about the recognized individual, and then each individual or group or team will take a photo with the Board of Trustees and Dr. Carpenter here onstage. These photos will be available on social media, and you're welcome to take photos as well for all our parents in attendance tonight. And again, thank you for being part of this exciting night, and now I'm happy to introduce Argyle ISD Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Courtney Carpenter.
All right, good evening, welcome. As Mr. Herron said and Mr. Slaton, we are so glad to have everyone here tonight. Another wonderful group of fall recognitions for us to celebrate. This is our second year to collectively bring our students together in the fall. We did last fall, and we did it again in the spring, and so this is our second year to do that. And this event's a great showcase of the wide range of so many successful students, and obviously, our students are not successful without the help of their faculty and staff and our parents. So thank you again, parents, for all of your continued support. Tonight represents another reward for the years of hard work and dedication. We are thrilled to celebrate you, and we are so very proud that you represent Argyle ISD. We're committed to providing wonderful experiences for our students and being to have them being involved in extracurricular and co-curricular activities, and tonight shines a light on how many of our Eagles are soaring so very high. We will get started. I know our Board of Trustees, they actually did their quorum a while ago, but I want them to make sure they get the proper introduction. So again, I'm going to recognize President Sam Slaton, Vice President Craig Hawkesworth, Secretary Matt Slaton, Trustee Dr. Leona McDade, Trustee Rich McDowell, Trustee Josh Weststrom, and Trustee Leann Artho. So thank you, let's give them a round of applause. I would also like to recognize our district leadership team this evening. Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Chris Daniel. Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Dawn Jordan. Chief Financial Officer, Liz Stewart. And our esteemed host tonight, Chief Communications Officer, Rick Herron, back in the booth. And I know he mentioned, I just want to say another thank you to Greg Royer and Austin Enser, our technology department, and our communications and marketing team, Laura Trubenbach, Christopher Saylor, and Tiffany Shawhart. We also have some campus leaders here in the building tonight, certainly want to celebrate them and recognize them. Hilltop Elementary, Robin Campbell, I don't believe she is with us this evening, but I think Heather Kennedy is. Heather, are you here? Oh, wait, okay. Sorry, Kim, we didn't know you were coming. Okay, Kim McCage is here, thank you. Argyle South Elementary Principal, Kristen Haynes. Jane Rusman Elementary, Lauren Tollis. Argyle West Principal, Renee Thunderberg. Sixth Grade Center Principal, Holly Williams. Argyle Middle School Principal, Donna Lumston. And Argyle High School Principal, Shannon Knowles. All right, let's get started recognizing our exceptional students, teachers, and coaches.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. We'll begin tonight's recognitions with our National Merit semifinalists from Argyle High School, and please welcome AHS Lead Counselor, Kaitlin McGuire.
All right, so our first recognition is going to be one of the highest achieving of students in the nation. That is going to be Drew Macarthur. Sorry, I have a little cough. Drew has been named the 2025 National Merit Semifinalist and is one senior among 16,000 semifinalists in the 70th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. High school juniors entered the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2023 Preliminary SAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. These students have the opportunity to continue in the competition for more than 7,000 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly 26 million that will be offered next spring. Please congratulate our Eagle senior Drew Macarthur.
Thank you, Drew. Drew, you can't leave just yet. Photo, photo in the center with our Board of Trustees, Mrs. McGuire and Dr. Carpenter. Congratulations, Drew. The next recognition is our Argyle High School National Merit Committed Students, and Ms. McGuire will represent those as well.
All right, about 34,000 of the high scorers that took the 2023 Preliminary SAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test will be designated commended students. Although commended students do not continue in the competition for National Merit Scholarships, some may be candidates for special scholarships offered by corporate sponsors. Argyle High School National Merit Commended Students include Aditha Anabethina, Hannah
If everyone can get in position and look right at Mr. Saylor in the middle and keep Perfect, congratulations. And Ms. McGuire will also be presenting our National Merit Recognized Students.
The National Recognition Programs are a way college board recognizes the academic achievements of rural area, small town, African-American, Black, Hispanic, Latino, Indigenous, Native American, and first-generation students. It is an indicator that these students are a top student based on PSAT scores, earning a three or higher on two or more exams, AP exams, in their ninth and 10th grade year, and their GPA when they submitted their application. Our National Recognition Students include, and there are a lot of these, so I'll give you all heads up, Debra Abraham, rural. David Iemey, African-American. Aditha Anabethina. Tuscan Bissett. Annalise Bodine. Kevin Cantrell. Leah Chaw. Whitney Clark. Colby Davenport. Reed Dillaman. Jack Dillon. Run, run, run. Phoebe Fromm. Cooper Gill. Erin Gomez. Presley Hawkesworth. Arushi Jane. Drew Macarthur. Partika Madavaram. Isabella Maizono. Gregory Muller. Colby Moses. Tane Munungula. Jacob Murphy. Jackson Nelson. Rachel Oldham. Riley Pizana. Vidica Ponti. Juliet Quinn. Studi Ryo. Faiza Siddiqui. Darsh Singh. Shiven Singh. Sao Maya Servanson. Sri Abanava Thatarathia. And Connor White. Congratulations to our National Merit Recognized Students.
All right, let's get a photo with the trustees and Dr. Carpenter and Mrs. McGuire. If everybody can keep looking at Mr. Saylor right here in the center, smile big. Argyle Eagles. All right, congratulations, what a great bunch of kids, the National Merit Recognized Next, we will recognize an outstanding member of the Lady Eagles Cross Country Team, and she will be introduced by Coach Devon Starenberg.
All right, I'm Devon Starenberg, and I'm the Lady Eagles Cross Country Coach, and we are here to recognize freshman Madison Chapman. All right, our girls' cross country team is the strongest that they've ever been this year, and Maddie played a huge part in that. She was new to our team this year because she was a freshman, but she immediately started contributing the moment that she showed up to summer practice. We knew from the very beginning that she was going to have a huge impact on our team. She was 100% committed from the get-go and worked hard all season. Maddie was a six-time top 20 finisher this season and placed ninth at the district meet, earning her a spot at the Region 1-5A Championships. Here she placed 45th and was the second fastest freshman in all of Region 1-5A. Coaching her has been such a privilege this year. She really sets a great example for our team, not just because of her hard work and her dedication, but because of her character. She is kind and humble, and she cares really deeply for her teammates and for their success and not just her own. So I just wanted to congratulate Maddie on a fantastic cross-country season, and thank you to the board for recognizing her efforts and success.
All right, everybody look up here at Mr. Saylor. Awesome, congratulations. Next, we'll be honoring the next two students to allow them an opportunity to attend an event tonight happening at the Eagle Stadium for Varsity Soccer. First, an outstanding recognition for a member of the Argyle Eagle Football Team, and here is Head Football Coach Todd Rogers to present the honor. If we can have our student to the side, please.
Well, I mean, the soccer players. Come on, Anthony. Anthony is our kicker on the varsity. Our football team is currently doing very well. We play a state semifinal match tonight, and Anthony's made a huge contribution to it. He's our kicker. He on sides, kicks it deep, field goal kicker, comes to practice every day, but he's an active member of our soccer team as well that's expected to do very well. So he wants to go be part of that group, so we're going to recognize his efforts. He's academic all-state. What that means is, he does very well in the classroom, he has a strong class rank, and he does well on the college entrance exam. So Anthony Ruivikaba.
All right, everyone look right here, Mr. Saylor, and we'll let you get off to the event. Here we go. Thank you, congratulations. Our next recognition that's unable to be here was William Trossith, if I am correct. He was an AP Scholar with Distinction for the 23-24 school year, so we were going to recognize him, he was unable to attend. Oh, he is here, I apologize. Let's start over. William, my bad. Mrs. Shannon Knowles from Argyle High School will recognize Mr. Trossith.
All right, William Trossith received the AP Scholar with Distinction recognition for the 2023-24 school year, and this is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams.
Now we'd like to recognize Argyle High School's Congressional Debate Team, and here to present them is Mrs. Knowles.
All right, good evening, and thank you for allowing us time to recognize our wonderful students. I couldn't possibly, this is from Ms. Harp, their director, so. I couldn't possibly begin this recognition without first thanking Ms. Knowles, that's why I had to say that. I'm not thanking myself. And the high school administration for entrusting this dedicated and talented group of students to me, in addition to Ms. Good, the UIL Academic Coordinator, and the administration for continued support. I have the honor of working with these students on a daily basis, and their passion and dedication have led them to excel in this rigorous world of congressional debate. These young minds have honored their research, speaking, and critical thinking skills to become formidable debaters. They have spent countless hours, many outside of school, delving into complex issues, crafting persuasive arguments, and mastering the art of parliamentary procedure. With only two returning members from a five-person team, to increasingly, this increasing this team to seven this year, they have worked, their work cut out for them. All of their hard work is evidenced by all five competing members progressing to finals at the UIL Regionals, and two students placing in the top three in finals, securing a trip to state in January. These members are Jack Dillon, Leah Chaw, Kevin Cantrell, Adhishri Dingkor, Charita Logesh, and Serene Elatar. Please join me in congratulating their hard work.
All right, everyone right here, Mr. Saylor, smiling big, right here. Awesome, congratulations to the Congressional Debate Team. All right, now we're recognizing the Argyle High School for the Advanced Placement Award, and here to present is Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Dawn Jordan.
The AP School Honor Roll recognizes schools whose AP programs are delivering results for students while broadening access. Schools can earn this recognition annually based on criteria that reflect a commitment to fostering a college-going culture, providing opportunities for students to earn college credit, and maximizing college readiness. Argyle High School has received the 2024 Bronze AP Honor Roll Award. Congratulations to our hard-working teachers, campus administration, our principal, and our counselors. This is the first time, to the best of my knowledge, that Argyle High School has earned this award for our district, and I'm super proud of the hard work that our teachers, staff, and kids have put in to growing and excelling this program.
All right, let's get a picture with Mrs. Knowles, Mrs. McGuire, and the trustees, All right, congratulations to Argyle High School for this great honor. Our next recognition is our AP Scholars with Distinction Awards, and here to present them is Mrs. Knowles.
Come back. Okay, we are excited to celebrate more of our exceptional students here at Argyle High School. These Eagles received the AP Scholar with Distinction recognition from the 2023-24 school year. And as stated before, this is granted to students who received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scored three or higher on five or more of these exams. The AP Scholars with Distinction include Debra Abraham, Aditha Anabetha, Cameron Bernard, Alexandra Borland, Leah Chaw, Christian Cockrell, Emily Dallas, Hannah David, Jack Dillon, Ethan Duncan, Maddie Echols, Zachary Fritz, Cooper Gill, Erin Gomez, Emily Harbach, Gillian Lafayette, Andrew Laws, Drew Macarthur, Shreyaas Mandur, Gregory Muller, Jackson Nelson, Rachel Oldham, Pascal, Pascal, I'm not even going to try, Amula Panji, Gordon Pazudo, Riley Pizana, Juliet Quinn, Felipe Henriquez, Zane Skaggs, Arush Singh, and Sri Tatvathri.
All right, let's all get squared away with this photo here. Got a lot of talented kids to get in this shot, so find an opening. Awesome, congratulations, very talented bunch, our AP Scholars with Distinctions Award, a very elite group, congratulations. Next, we would like to honor our district art teachers who won the Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction Award, and here to present again is Dr. Dawn Jordan.
Over 1,200 districts were eligible to apply for this TAEA, Texas Art Education Association, Visual Arts Award, and just 94 districts received this outstanding honor for the 23-24 academic year. The Visual Arts Administrators of Texas, a division of TAEA, recognizes districts with outstanding leadership in promoting the arts in their district and community. AISD's visual arts program met or exceeded a rigorous 14-point rubric. The rubric examines a district's visual art program by evaluating exhibitions, contests, community engagements in the visual arts. This is done through field experiences, community service, and collaboration with other content areas. Please welcome the art teachers of Argyle ISD, and please hold your applause until all the names have been recognized. Tonya Cosla, Argyle High School. Sherri Higgins, Argyle High School. Cory Hedrick, Argyle Middle School. Joelle Browning, Argyle Middle School. Amber Finn, Argyle Sixth Grade Center. Caress Monk, Hilltop Elementary. Amber Jonas, Argyle South Elementary. Mary Mock, Jane Rusman Elementary. And Amber Bridges, Argyle West Elementary. Congratulations to our wonderful art teachers in Argyle ISD.
Great photo right here. All right, everybody get squared away and look at Mr. Saylor. Awesome, congratulations to our awesome art teachers across Argyle ISD. Next, we will recognize another special group of teachers and staff here in Argyle ISD. They are the Fall Soaring Star Employee Winners, and here to present them is Superintendent, Dr. Courtney Carpenter.
All right, so one of our favorite things we get to do every month is to celebrate and surprise a staff member on a campus. Students, I'm pretty sure y'all have probably seen us come on campus with a lot of pomp and circumstance, and noise, and balloons, and celebrations, and so we just like to celebrate them. And what's really cool about this for them is that it's, they're nominated by either peers they work with, sometimes students, but also sometimes parents, and that means a lot to a staff member when those outside of the school organization are recognizing them. So tonight, when we began this, really kind of looking at the core values of excellence, respectful relationships, honest communication, security, and kindness. Our first Soaring Star recognition this year has been sixth-grade library aide Donna Pingeli. Ms. Pingeli embodies the award's core values through her daily kindness and dedication to staff and students. She has created- She has created a welcoming and safe environment in the library, offering students a place to gather before and during school. Committed to excellence, Donna introduced new activities like a loyalty card program to encourage reading and rewards students with prizes. Next, we will honor Mr. Gutek at Argyle Middle School. Mr. Gutek exemplifies excellence by holding students to high standards while adjusting to each student's needs. He builds strong, respectful relationships with students and families, creating lasting connections which are evident by watching him work with our students. Through honest and consistent communication, he supports student progress with positivity and high expectations. Congratulations. Our final Soaring Star recognition for this fall semester is our very own Athletics Ms. Kelly Perkins. Ms. Perkins's commitment and dedication to our success is amazing. Each week she communicates with opposing schools, makes travel plans for every sports team, oversees all the entry fees and travel expenses for each team, she deals with daily questions and challenges from parents and students, rents fields, executes rental contracts. I don't think there's anything she doesn't do, and she gets to work every day with Coach Rogers. Every day with Coach Rogers, right? And I think one of the neatest moments when we came to celebrate and surprise Ms. Perkins is the whole football team was there to experience that and to celebrate her, and you can tell how much they love and care for you. And so congratulations to our Fall Soaring Star winners. We are so proud of you and so glad you're part of Argyle ISD.
Awesome. Congratulations to our Soaring Star winners. And as Dr. Carpenter mentioned, a fun thing we get to do with each of these winners each month is to go surprise them in their classroom. They have no idea what's about to happen, so it's fun to enjoy that with the students and their other staff members and their colleagues, and see the excitement on their face for their colleague, uh, to be excited. And if you know of one, please nominate one of those online, uh, one of the Soaring Star Award winners across the district. So, community and families can nominate them as well. Okay, our next recognition is the Argyle Marching Band, and here to present is our band director, Doc- Director Jason Byrd.
Good evening. Thank you for, thank you. That was just the first thing I put down, so I'd... Um, representing, uh, the Argyle High School Marching Band are our drum majors, Ms. Addie Crawford, Rain Hesley, Annie Oberzut, Pascal Amatayo, and our band president, Rachel Oldham. Come on over, please. Um, the Argyle High School Marching Band had a great year this year, um, a stunning year. If you happened to go see us this year, thank you. One, thank you for coming and being a part of it. You would recognize the efforts and what they, what they have to do and the accomplishments they made, but um, this was a special year for us, and, um, the, the marching band made it past the region level by making a win at UIL, then went to area. And, uh, for the first time in our history here at Argyle, the Argyle High School Band advanced past area in 5A and to the state prelims, and then advanced past the state prelims into the state finals. And out of over 200, uh, groups that entered into the contest, Argyle High School Marching Band finished seventh at the 5A State Marching Contest. And one week later, we, um, had an opportunity to go to Indianapolis, uh, to perform and compete at the Bands of America Grand Nationals. And, uh, we advanced past out of 114 groups. We passed through the next round and finished 23rd and fourth in our class. Super proud of all the students at the Argyle High School Marching Band. Thank you.
Alright, let's get a photo. Everybody fill in right here, Mr. Saylor. Congratulations, Argyle High School Marching Band. Okay, we will now shift to athletics, and here to present the next recognition to members of the Argyle Varsity Football Team is again Coach Todd Rogers.
Okay, so here's what we do. Let's bring the football players out here, and then that way they can be standing out here and I can tell them what awards they got. And the filmers and the trainers, everybody. There's 23 of you. Be very excited about it. Come on out here. Just go back. I gotta see the far side. Okay, come on, come on. You're good. Bryce, my filmer, is bigger than everybody. I should've talked him into playing football. Okay. Are you awkward? Do you feel awkward standing in front of everybody? You're good? Okay. It's gonna be okay. Alright, just look, kinda look out there, see if you see anybody.
Can we get a shift to the right?
Little bit of shift to the right. Okay. Argyle has 23-
Your left.
Academic All-State, and it all boils down to this. We have GPA, class rank, ACT, SAT scores. And we submit this to the state, and there's a standard, so it doesn't matter about classification. It doesn't matter, uh, what position you play. You're an active member on the football team, and, and it's amazing because I looked up a couple other schools. I'm not gonna hate on anybody, but Grapevine had four and Colville had six. And we got 23. Alright. I may have looked up South Oak Cliff, South Lake Carroll, and Allen, and we far surpassed them too, so... Alright, that's a, so that's a little motivation for Friday night. Our football team is 13-1, and every person standing right here plays an integral part to our success, okay? We have, uh, somebody that videos for us, we have the trainers that show up multiple mornings a week, and then we have the football players, and we have somebody shoots a drone video. Nothing works unless they work, so I'm very appreciative of it. So, let's get to the awards. Weston Chaney, I don't think he's here. He's, he's a little sicky, okay? First-team Academic All-State. Luke Fetters, first-team Academic All-State. Will Kresiak, first-team Academic All-State, and Greg Muller, first-team Academic All-State. Let's give them a round of applause. Second team, that's no slouch, okay? It's not demeaning, no slouch. Colt Caladine, second team. Mike Gasaway, second team. Tom Irwin, second team. McCade Manning, second team. Let's give them a round of applause. Academic Honorable Mention, still, I think it's like a 94-95 average right here. Aiden Fletcher, Honorable Mention. John Hurt, Honorable Mention. Tanner Kane, Honorable Mention. Luke Lane, Honorable Mention. Solomon Queros, Honorable Mention. Kirk Rudolph, who's working and selling barbecue right now, uh, Honorable Mention. Garrett Westrom, Honorable Mention. Hank Woodard, Honorable Mention. Okay, let's give them a round of applause. Trinity Arnold and Ava Chong. Yeah, where are y'all? Right here? Raise your hands. Alright, let's look at those. Second team, and Honorable Mention right there. Fabulous, good stuff. Jaden Kim and Bryce Rapp, Academic Honorable Mention, so let's give, shake your, put your hands out there. They gotta know who you are. Right there, Honorable Mention. Did I miss anybody? Wait a minute. You see, they made a little list right here and it kind of got confusing. Abby Gray. There to go. See, I got it, right there. Okay, Abby Gray, Honorable Mention, right there. See, wave, see, raise yourself. Alright, alright, here we go. Okay, our football team plays this Friday night over at SMU. We'd love for you to be there. Hopefully, we can bring the football team back for recognition in front of the board. Alright, maybe or maybe not wearing gold medals, so let's, let's shoot for the gold medals. Alright, let's give them a round of applause.
Congratulations. Alright, if we can double stack the students. Alright, everybody look up here. Smiling big. Hold that smile. Alright, hold tight. Congratulations. And again, as Coach Rogers said, the Eagle football team will be recognized at a future board meeting, and again, they play Friday night at 12:00 PM at SMU's Ford Stadium. We are wishing Coach Rogers, his staff, and the Eagles all the best on Friday. Okay, our next recognition is the Argyle High School Tennis Team, and here to present them is My Hawk.
Alright. Come on out, guys. But I, I kind of want to first start by really, really speaking to the, how, how tough it was for this group of kids as we finished, and we played two, two separate seasons. We play a fall team tennis season, and we play a individual spring season. We just completed our fall team tennis season, and of the team that plays, eight boys, eight girls, 16 kids competing through UIL, all stages. Last year, we made it to the regional semifinals, uh, where we finished our run, but we graduated 12 of those 16 players. So this team had to step up and fill the role of 12 graduating players and, and, and continue the success that that team had previous to us. Well, the first thing I want to say is they did that and they took it to another level. Uh, it's just incredible what they've been able to do since they got here, and some of them just got here as freshmen. This year's varsity team had amazing fall season, amassing a season record of 19 wins to two losses. They claimed a district championship, a bi-district championship, area championship, regional quarterfinals, and semifinals championships, advancing all the way to the regional finals. In our district season, in the all-district team, uh, selections, the following players were voted to either a first-team or a second-team honor. First-team honors, Kayden Everett, line-one boy singles. Slade Underwood, line-three boy singles. Bargava Ampajwalum, line-four boy singles. Madin Macha, line-five boy singles. Cooper Atkins, line-six boy singles. Kayden Everett and Barton Ampajwalum were line-two boys doubles. Those were our first-team selections. In the second-team honors, Srihan Naravati, Slade Underwood, line-two boys doubles. Cooper Atkins and Madin Macha, line-three boys doubles. In the district special awards, the boys' MVP for the district was Kayden Everett. The girls' MVP was Megna Arun Kumar. Um, newcomer of the year, who's not attending tonight, she's sick, but was Lily Mannering. Our sportsmanship awards for our district went to Tessa Woasty and Bargava Ampajwalum. And at the end of the season, the team finished the year with a final state ranking poll ranked at the number 10 team in the state in 5A, which is a real, real great accomplishment for such a young team. The only two, two members standing up here today that are seniors are Megna Arun Kumar and Kayden Everett. So they're gonna have a spectacular going forward, and they're gonna keep, continue to keep building. I do want to say our award today, though, goes to, uh, Megna Arun Kumar. She is Academic All-State First Team. And I also'd like to say, as, as she's won that award, she's won so many other awards, but she's a three-time state champion in the 5A, uh, UIL. She's won it three years in a row. She's actually never lost a match in girl singles, not one, not one time in three years, which is incredible. But, anyway, the 2024 team tennis, uh, Argyle High School Team Tennis Varsity Team.
Great pick. Congratulations to our Argyle High School Tennis Team. And our final recognition of the night is the Argyle Lady Eagles Volleyball Team, and here to present them is Coach Caitlin Johnson.
Coach My Hawk forgot to add that I believe Megna has not, only not lost a match, she has not lost a set. Is that correct? Queen Megna, she is, she can be beat. Alright, volleyball team, come on out. We have Maddie Justice, Jordan Moore, Piper McEnheim, Conley Burns, Harper Hurley, Ella Roberts, Tegan Barnett, Hannah Baker, who's behind Hannah Seuss, Susanna Haunson, and Carson Rogers with us tonight. Um, our Argyle Eagle volleyball team finished 39-6 this season. Uh, they were ranked in the top four in 5A all season long. Um, they are co-district champs with a record of 11-1, sweeping nine out of our 12 district opponents. We swept through the first round of playoffs, defeating Chisholm Trail, Joshua, Abeline Wiley, Lubbock Cooper, and advanced to the state tournament for the first time since, uh, 2017, and ultimately fell in a hard-fought five-set battle to Wakeland. Uh, 12 of our athletes have received 29 awards and counting at the district, area, region, and state level. All 16 of our rostered athletes receive district academic recognition, and seven of our seniors receive state academic recognition with the Texas Girls Coaches Association. They are Georgia Sanchez, Harper Hurley, Madeline Justice, Conley Burns, Piper McEnheim, Tatum Husby, and Jordan Moore. Um, this season, we were able to stand on, uh, the biggest stage, advancing to the state tournament at the end of the year. Uh, we made it to the final event, and every accomplishment, um, and above every accomplishment that this group has achieved, uh, and has yet to achieve throughout the next couple weeks, uh, there is one thing that I'm super proud of, and it is how this group of girls took care of each other. We played a lot of great volleyball. We did a lot of great things on the court. Um, but off the court, these girls loved each other. Um, they took care of each other. They invested in one another. Um, and it was super sweet in the locker room. I'm gonna echo what, uh, Joey said, and she said, "We could've won one more game. We could've won the state championship, and it would've never been enough because I would've wanted one more game, um, with this team." And it was a really special year, um, not because of the great volleyball we played, but just because who these girls are and, and what they brought. And so we're super proud of them and all they accomplished this year, um, and congratulations on a great season.
Alright, one more big round of applause for the Super Lady Eagle Volleyball Team this year.
Alright, what an incredible night of honoring so many talented Eagle students. Teachers, coaches, and directors, again, thank you so much for coming this evening. I would just like to say that when you watch this and you kind of reflect over all the students and all the accomplishments that this district uh, has, is able to exhibit, um, at, at a state level, because, you know, if you realize what's going on here, we're bringing the kids that are being, being recognized at the state level, but also those national awards. Um, it would be great if our state legislators and our state leaders could really see all the extracurricular, co-curricular successes in this district of what makes public school so great. So, thank you all for being here, families. Thank you for taking time out of your busy holiday schedule. Uh, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you for coming, and, uh, we appreciate you being here this evening. Oh, sorry, Mr. Slaton has one more thing to say. Sorry, hang on.
Sorry, y'all can run. We're gonna officially close it. Uh, but, but again, thank you all for being here tonight, and hope you all have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Um, be safe out there, and remember, together we soar. Time is 6:49 PM, and we are adjourned.